You know, there was something mentioned the other day about...
Join me for the flag salient, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we come before you tonight. We ask that you grant your divine healing on one of our own that was injured today in an accident. We thank you for the blessings of the nurses and doctors with their healing hands, and we ask that you be over and watch over him tonight and be with his family and give them strength and peace that everything, you know, in this journey for his recovery. Pass this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
All right. Approval of the agenda? That's tonight's agenda, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I've gotten several calls and emails regarding our abbreviated meeting. And then thinking of it and looking over and then some things that have popped up to my attention that I would need to bring, and I really shouldn't wait a whole nother week. I don't know if this was a good idea or not to do abbreviated meeting. I think, you know, we should be doing our regular sessions, and then if we want to do a work session in on the same night, that's fine. But, I mean, there's just too much business that we do, that we run into that we can't just be skipping it every other week. I mean, I mean, we're just filling our ways through things, but that's just my, my opinion on this. I mean, several of the issues that I got tonight are going to require executive session and, and it's, we should have had a full, you know, running, running businesses as you normal and then either pick another night to do work sessions or do it in conjunction. I mean, I thought it was a great idea when it started, but then when you start getting all this stuff compounding, I don't, I don't know if you guys have been getting anything else to, over the last week or not.
We can always make a motion to...
Yeah, you can add it to the agenda.
Right. I mean, I'm just, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, I got a couple of things.
No more, no more short agendas?
Yeah.
Then we'll just do our, we can just do our work sessions on...
Either on another night or come in early or something. I mean, I don't...
I just need to have agenda topics to meet by Friday morning because that's when I put up the...
Right. Right. Well, yeah, and that's what I mean, yeah. I mean, this here, we didn't give nobody an opportunity to do it, so... I would like to amend the meeting for two executive sessions for pursuant to KSA 7543-19B1 involving matters of individual non-elected personnel.
Okay. You want to do that between the township clerk appointment and the commissioner comments?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And then during that time, before we do commissioner comments, while we're in executive session, anybody that wanted to sign up for public comment, allow them to go ahead and do that and then...
You make the motion and we'll do whatever, whatever passes.
Well, I motion that we do public comments before, after we come out of exec, between, yeah, after we come out of executive session and before commissioner comments.
Okay, and you said you had two executive sessions?
Yeah, two.
Are they both with us?
They'll be separate because they'll be both with action. So like, we'll go into one, come back out, do action, go into the next one, come out.
Are they both personnel?
Yes.
You can go in for one and then come out and do action on one.
Okay. Well, one involves more than the three of us, the other one involves three of us, so, yeah.
So then, yes, you'll need that. Okay.
Are we calling somebody?
Huh?
I guess the executive session didn't matter. Okay.
So you're gonna, are you making a motion for the...
For two executive sessions and public comment to be added to the agenda.
Okay.
Now, second motion.
Your bar?
Yes.
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 Okay. And then I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll second it. Yes.
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 Okay. Approval of minutes from 3:325.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from 3:325.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Consent agenda, approval of 3:625 account, accounts payable totaling fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and zero cents. Approval of 3:725 accounts payable totaling one hundred twelve thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And approval of 3:725 payroll totaling three hundred five thousand five hundred seventy dollars and forty-six cents. Oh, and then tax roll corrections, real estate, special assessments, trucks.
And?
And then January financials.
I'll make a motion on the consent agenda to approve A through E.
I'll second. Yes.
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 All right. S E K RPC board member.
That was one of the boards that we had discovered that needed to have an appointment, and so we just need you guys to make a recommendation.
I brought this, brought this up because this was brought up to me. I want to make a nomination to nominate Mary Wyatt to be the representative on this board for the county. She is the... She basically does this for the city as well. She's the one that tries to bring all the new business to Bourbon County and things like that, so...
So what does that national stand for?
They are the Regional Planning Commission. That's the one that you pay a membership to that they can help you with grants and things like that.
Okay.
Since I didn't know about it today, I guess I don't have anybody else to nominate or to talk about.
You want to table it?
The way I understand it is Mr. Harrington is our current representative. Mary Wyatt brought this to my attention that we were, that this appointment is up for reappointment and asked if she could, basically ask if she could be our representative. She does a good job at the city, so I figured I would recommend her.
Does she have time to do both?
She asked for it.
She would already be there for one, right?
Do I?
She'd already be there for one, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't...
Yeah, she asked for the appointment, so I would assume she has time.
Does it run a year?
Do they have to be...
Yearly?
What's, what's the guidelines for it? I mean, if we, can we just appoint? Do they have to be an employee? Do they have to be a...
Just a county resident?
Yeah.
Typically, you would be a commissioner, but if you guys don't have time for it, then you can appoint somebody that would, that would represent the county.
Yeah. I mean, I don't even know right now what, what boards I have. I mean, I got confused on some of them.
I'll bring you a list of them.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
I mean, I don't have nothing against Mary Wyatt. I just, I don't know.
Let's see, let's, I mean, if you want to, I'd be willing to want to look into it some more too before I make a decision. I mean, we could table it till next week.
Yeah, that's...
It's fine by me.
Yeah, I make a motion and we table it until next week.
Okay.
I'll second.
Wasn't it?
Yes.
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 Okay. The Marion Township clerk appointment, Mr. Brent Smith.
They had someone resign, and so they're asking for the appointment. I think I put the letter there on your guys'.
Right, this one, huh?
I would make a motion to approve this, to appoint Marion Township clerk appointment, Brent Smith.
I'll second it.
Kruger?
Yes.
Your bar?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Executive session?
You asked for one.
Yep. I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 7543-19B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy for ten minutes with action. The three commissioners, clerk Eric Bailey, which I do not believe is, is...
He's made it.
And Kevin Davison.
That's a lot of people.
Yeah, and the sheriff.
Uh, ten minutes?
Yeah, ten minutes.
Anybody second it?
I'll second it.
All right, you're on.
Yes.
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 So we'll be back at 5:51.
What you doing, Melfors?
Oh, I couldn't do it well.
And so...
Go bust to the... And then, so, and I'm surprised we...
In class or shop?
Yeah, I have a teacher, uh, world education.
We probably, it sounds such...
I don't know, probably not actual.
I remember telling him, why should we shop?
Couldn't get Norm Jones to do it?
Well, we had, we had talked about them, and he, he said, I don't think I can say I want to do it.
Norm Jones could do it. Norm Jones, he's freaking awesome.
I took it down Friday night and dropped it off after all, Scott's, and he's following, saying, I'm a tree. And that picture was... Yeah, so he got, he walked in there today and started to do stuff parts.
Dan, I'll tell you what.
He did the first one.
If, if somebody builds a shop, just to work on decent trucks, it'd be busy all of the...
Yeah.
You know, what ever happens to this, one of the black lives, Tony's or Jerry, Terry's or whoever, Diesel Repair. Well, there's one between here, just for Larry, that's for Larry, Diesel Repair. Now Larry's Diesel Repair, before you all typically turn on it.
One of those in...
I don't know, man, I'll tell you what, it's just, he can make a, make a whisper little. But she could keep two, three cakes.
But you know what? Who wants to do that? I know, that's, I mean, number one, that's art. That's art, that's art of the body. I mean, you know? I don't want to do that either. Then there's a guy, when neighbor liners took his truck up there, that guy, like, who was... Has he been since he's old? I can tell you, that guy, Sam Trans, who took his truck up there.
I think you have to grant that, although he controls Sam's, his, Sam's is a...
Yeah.
I think there were two, three, six, seven, eight.
We, we buy our motor, my guy, and our Marlin, they build it down here, and, you know, we sell it. Sometimes too. Well, they said, take, change the motors, stuff on somebody's gas motors, you got to pull a cab. Now, that's good, that's good engineering.
Design, design is long. Forrest just looking after their mechanics. To change his workplace. Said, say, Danny, come back here and try to turn the brake wheels, you just do that. He said, yes, brake, we got you before, he said, again. He said, because the hips.
When you go for a jet, jet's up there.
Right, right, hold it, yeah. Brian's calling. Well, I had coal. I know, I think they're very close, or five.
You're not walking out. I don't have a problem with that. No, he just was showing off.
Yeah, oh, really?
I thought they were gonna... It's 3:00 AM, we're gonna come here. Parks, happy to do that.
I want them. I want them, my whole yard, I want them. Me too, I want them, I want to get some pool. I want, I want them covered up. I want them to have some stuff so much.
Turn sheep and, yeah. I've seen your wife run on her casket.
That's because she's retired.
So she's just spending your money.
She don't work, she don't work.
You said you were over. Yeah, one of Dave's guys today was living a pretty good life.
You're right. It was awesome. It's supposed to like this all week till the weekend.
I want more snow.
It's supposed to cover crappy in the weekend.
I want more snow. It's supposed to rain, right? It's supposed to rain, so... What are you doing? If you want to do... Showpiece, we can do a couple of... Big sign up. Yeah, yeah, I've done several of them. Good eye, I'm on a bank. See, I'm on a bank, can't you see that?
Then they actually...
Or you... Out of their side. But we got good... Yeah, we also got, uh, we came in, just ahead of...
He didn't.
I know, I just, I just said you care for it, so... I know, I'm just telling them.
Want to get jokes?
There you go.
I shouldn't say that. Once you get some of the jokes out. Where'd you go?
So you, he's yours.
Yeah, he's, they were... Four, five, six, eight, four, three, two, one, we were five, six, eight, five, four, three, two, one. We were still five, eight, nine, ten.
I didn't think you'd fire him.
He might, I live out in Kansas City, I don't like that.
I feel your pain, I'm, 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 I'm more, maybe I'm a bit of a... I don't want to do this.
What was the time? You got your number?
Fifty-one.
Yeah.
You want me to set the clock back?
We were gonna come to you.
So we taking action? Yes. Motion to resume normal, normal session with action. Apologize for the delay, folks.
That's my bad.
So... I'd make a motion to adjust pay for non-elected personnel during the storm as discussed.
I need very clear instructions.
So, we'll make a motion to pay the employees that were on duty during the snowstorm, five hours of straight time additional pay for the five hours that the courthouse was closed, if they was on duty. And that should be public works, the sheriff's department, and EMS. Am I missing anybody?
Landfill.
Landfill, if they was on duty.
They were on duty.
Now, I had people working from home. Do they get that? Because they have that ability.
I don't see why not.
And does this include part-time people that were working?
Part-time people don't usually get benefits, but...
And then I say that this is something we do, well, let's go ahead and do the, finish the motion. You made the motion, I'll second.
Well, hold on, we got one.
It needs, it needs to be bigger than that.
What?
An individual has a 24-hour shift. Tell me how that's broken down. They get 24 hours at regular time and then an additional five hours at regular time?
That's my understanding of how, how, how it's been done in the past.
When I worked for the county, if we were on duty during a holiday, we would get paid for the time that we worked, and you would get eight hours of straight time for the holiday. This is basically the same thing. Anytime that the...
So double time.
The county closes and people have to, to work through that, it's the same thing. And I would extend that motion to make that the same way again. I don't know how it got changed, when it got changed, but I would make a motion for it to go back to the way it was.
We still got another motion on the table. So, the motion is to pay everyone who worked during the snowstorm five hours of straight time additional pay for the hours the courthouse was closed.
So again, they work a 24-hour shift, they're gonna get five more hours on top of their 24 hours at regular time?
At regular time, yes.
Okay. Who's making the motion?
I just made the motion.
And I'll second.
Wasn't that?
Yes.
Yes.
Your bar?
Yes.
And then you have a second one, you say?
Yes, I do.
How long does it need to be?
Ten minutes.
We gotta cut it down.
Let's go five. Well, I won't near be, it won't, it won't be as long, but it is specific. Make a motion to go into executive session for five minutes with action pursuant to KSA 75-4319 subsection B subsection one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Three commissioners.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yes.
Your bar?
Yes.
Yes. Five minutes, we will be back at 6:04. You want to come knock on the door for us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Susan, how are your payroll system working? They even work 35 hours?
Um, well, we have a code that we can go in and say it's straight time and it won't give them overtime.
Would that be consistent with the law that says if you work over the hours?
Yes, it will because it's, it's like an additional pay. The problem is, is we paid them a ten and a half, so now we have to go back and manually calculate everything.
Gotcha. My old payroll system would handle that.
Yeah, they don't, they're not real.
It would have paid them, well, actually.
Six years old. Ms. Fay Cowan lived in Mapleton. And she was a staunch supporter of Bourbon County. Her husband was Buck Cowan. And the second one I want to talk about, and we're gonna bury him on Friday. You gotta remember, I was in the Army. He wasn't in the Army. We're gonna bury Mike Shelton out at National Cemetery. The Marines are, hurrah. But I was Army, so I go, hooah. That's all I got, commissioners. Thanks for that.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Shelton.
Shelton.
He is a Marine.
Simplify.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else?
Well, a couple of questions before I get to my comments. Are we still planning to have the tax sale attorney here from Wichita next week?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay. So it's still on the agenda, and we'll have him at the land bank meeting. If he's listening, I assume that Lisa Dillon has arranged that.
She has.
Yeah, I believe she has. It's because I'm not saying anything yet. It's on. I'll speak loud. I don't like to have my back to the door, so I should be facing you. There are only two people in this room, and this is, I hope this is not an agenda item, but there's only two people in this room that have attended probably the most budget sessions in the last five years. I don't see anybody else. Oh, yeah, you've been here. So two, three. But there's only one person that you have to listen to, and that's the clerk. There's only 15,000 people that you have to answer to, and I won't mention all the names.
Do you know all of them by heart?
I do not. But I do know one pretty much by heart, and I ask this every year. To be read into these budget sessions, do not show up here and say, refer to line six, and I don't have line six in front of me. And I am more than happy to print those things off on my own printer, on my own paper, with my own ink. But I don't want to sit here and participate in the process and be verbal in the process without having the information. Last week, or the last budget session, whenever David got accused of talking to me instead of the sheriff, I think those district people or department heads, they need to be seated here in the front row. You don't need to be seeing me. They should be seated in the front row, not talking from the back. So if we do that again, I would highly suggest reserving this front row for the department managers so we can hear from them. And that they don't think you're talking to me because I didn't answer.
I remember that.
That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Commissioner's comments? Let me go first. Okay, I have. Tomorrow is a press conference that the city is having at La Roche. Are you guys, I mean, I'm going, so. What time is it? Two o'clock. You're gonna probably be there. So what do we need to do? So tomorrow at the. We won't be talking business. Press conference, there may be at least two commissioners there, but they will not discuss business. Maybe three, but I'm not gonna guarantee I can make it because it's about time I gotta head to go get my daughter from school, so.
What's the topic?
Uh, not sure. Press conference, city. Press, press conference for the city.
Where?
At La Roche Baseball Complex. Two o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Chamber actually posted it on, online. I believe everybody is invited. Yeah, public is invited. I just wanted to make sure. Just know that you may have. We're good.
Good call.
Have at least two commissioners there. All right. That's all I had.
Okay. Uh, just want to make an announcement that we are going to be moving the hospital equipment out of the hospital tomorrow, and it will be moved to the new building that Public Works just purchased to save us money on having to rent Connex boxes and allow us to take a little bit more time with this auction and to utilize a professional auction service that specializes in selling medical equipment to raise more money for the county. So I wanted to let everyone know that that was taking place, and I think the cat's out on the bag, out of the bag on the other thing. I was just gonna let everybody know to keep Bob Reed in their prayers tonight. That's all I got.
Okay. I got some directions for the clerk because we've got some work that needs done. And so we need bids on courthouse repairs. We need roof bids on the annex in the EMS building. We also need pest control bids. We need to start putting out bids for all the county hay ground. And look into trash service bids and see if we want to just cover the entire county with one service or if the department heads want to continue to have their own. If they want to fall under one umbrella, then we'll get bids for it, for all of it. We also need fees on the next agenda from the department heads.
Do you want them each to represent themselves to you, or how do you?
I would say each department needs to come in and, whether they do it or they designate someone from their department to do it.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna use the bad Z-word. When can we get some updates on that?
Um, I am waiting for some attorney feedback before we go much further. So it's not really a question I can give, give you the answer to today.
Okay. And then I guess I'll just ask the other two commissioners. I do the radio show tomorrow morning. Is there anything you want me to put out? Good, bad, or indifferent? I mean, I can cuss myself for you if you want me to. No. I mean, of course, still, you know, I, I would say all the things that we're working on, we're working on zoning, we're working on, you know, these, these things. So, I mean, you can just tell them that, that's what we're working on. Budget zoning, I can't even remember now. There was something else we was.
Roads.
Roads. Roads?
Yeah, that's gonna come up as a conver, as a budget. At least, I think, first of April is when he wanted to do it.
Yep. And I actually had another call on fences, and I tried to reach out. I get, reach out to our attorney for more clarification on that.
I've seen lots of resolutions where there's fence viewing.
Yeah, yeah. And state law.
I was gonna.
Fence viewing. We've seen.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna mention during the commission comment, but I think precedent has already been set.
Yeah, I think so.
You guys, the board has viewed fences since the beginning.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna get more clarification from, from council, and then we'll move forward from there. Yes.
Is there still an open issue about Laura Holdridge's product last week about back taxes and deeds?
Yeah, we're still working on that, too. So, I mean, that might be something you mentioned. Full plate.
I can send out an email to the attorney about these are the things that need follow-up and.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Since he didn't know who Legacy was, they have to really give him a lot of history.
Yeah, a lot of scanning.
All right. So I think that's all I got. Yes. Just clarification. Are you the contact with, on the solar, still, right? Yes. Okay. Okay. I had some questions regarding that. As far as I know. One, I want to know who to refer to. Yep, tell them to call me. Call me or email me, text me, yell at me, I don't care, whatever. Yeah. I mean, because I don't want to speak out of turn with. If you know something that. Nope, and it's been pretty quiet on that front lately, so if somebody's got, I mean, I talk to some people two or three times a week and other people once a month, so. Okay. Anybody got anything else?
I know.
All right. In that case, the meeting is adjourned. And. Budget. You guys want to take five minutes and we start working on the budget? Well, it's an open work session. You can come and go if you please. I'm good right now. I don't have.
Did you get everything signed that you needed?
No.
We gotta sign these, too?
Yes.
I think we gotta sign those.
No, just you have to sign those. You just sign front and back on those.
What about the? Is it, is it? Front and back?
I know.
Killing me smalls.
There's a lot of them.
Is the band still coming in the 19?
No.
They're not?
No. I gotta set up a future.
No, you guys do not do that.
I gotta set up a future appointment with them. He did send me an email today, though, so we'll put out a notice at some point. I know.
Dependable, tell. 620, 215.
Okay. Do you, do you want me to have them reach out to you?
Referring, we're calling, referred to.
Okay.
Okay.
You don't know who it is.